We are on. I have 6:30. Let's get started. We'll start with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty then.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of January 9th, 2023, and the payroll manifest of January 10th, 2023.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Can be, this is, the new minute taker will be doing this, so if you can make sure we use names every time somebody speaks, so she doesn't have to identify by voice.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Tyler Eaton. We'll take roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morn.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
You.
And I'll make a motion to approve the public minutes of January 3rd, 2023.
And there are non-public as well.
And non-public.
Can we separate them, please?
Yeah, 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 correction. Yeah, so strike that. So, motion to approve the unofficial minutes of January 3rd, 2023, as, if, as amended, if amended.
No, say as written.
As written. I didn't know if we had any amendments or not.
I do.
Second.
Okay.
So, motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Tyler Eaton. I do have some, a couple of things. Just, uh, under, right, the paragraph below, Mr. Dumas moved to cut an additional 8,099. The next paragraph starts with he interim town administrator. There should be a T, so that it's the. And then, um, further on, towards the bottom, Mr. Bartlett recommended cutting the Highway Capital Reserve Fund to $50,000. Eaton seconded, passed, three to one, Bartlett nay. So, I'm just wondering why Ben made a motion and then voted against it.
That is not correct.
I didn't think so. [laughing].
He voted against it. He voted.
Why?
It was there.
He voted against it?
Yes.
So, who?
Three to one.
But who made the motion?
He was two to one saying he didn't want it, because you wanted the cut.
Had to have been Tony.
Was it me?
Wasn't me.
John wasn't here.
Here, here is where the mistake is. Ben recommended cutting it to 50, but it carried at staying at 100.
Okay, well, he did make a.
No, it, it failed, I thought.
Ben didn't.
Yeah, it failed. It failed.
It failed.
It failed.
Well.
I voted for it, two voted against it.
That's, that was right.
Uh.
No, no, no. You made your recommendation. You never made a motion.
What was the motion, then?
No, the motion was to basically to approve.
Yes.
The warrant article for $100,000.
Uh, yeah. Actually, I think what happened is you recommended cutting and no motion was taken.
Right.
Because it's coming up tonight.
Okay.
Well, we didn't talk about it at the last meeting, that they were all coming up tonight.
But we didn't vote on any of them at that meeting.
Yes, you did.
You, 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 you made, we made a global motion, that those were the warrant articles that we wanted to put forward. Uh, you voted against that.
Right.
But.
Now.
But, wait.
Okay.
But what John and I talked about the other night is, that's not the way that we do things. We vote on individual warrant articles, and that's what we have to do tonight.
And that's why I voted against it, for that purpose.
Okay.
And that's what happened last on the third.
Correct.
It was brought up specifically for the vehicle for $100,000, and the vote was three to one in favor.
Can we table these, and I'll check the tape?
Yes.
Because there is, I, I think what it was, is you wanted to cut it to 50, and the rest of the board didn't, so this, this doesn't.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, this, this is.
I remember what you thought it was.
Yeah.
I will, I will, so if we could table that.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion on the non-public minutes?
Sure, well, sure.
Oh, I had another correction, actually.
Oh, you have a correction?
On the very first page, um, Mr. Eaton made a motion to approve the minutes of December 29th, seconded by Ms. Dumas. I don't know who she is.
Hey, I've been called, I've been called Mr. Danus.
Yep.
Apparently, your wife and my husband have been sitting in for us.
I, I will bring the minutes back with those two items adjusted, and, and probably Kelly will look at the tape and correct whatever mistake I made on this, uh, mo, on the motion there.
Thank you, Steve, for paying attention.
Yes, I do think, I think that's how I remember it now.
Yeah.
Not as this was stated.
All right, we have an appointment at 7:00.
Oh, was there going to be a motion on the non-public?
Oh.
Oh, um, uh, do we have the?
Yeah, I sent it out here.
Yeah, I had it.
Another copy.
I've only got the, okay.
I don't think we put them in the packet I sent them out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of January 3rd, 2023, as written.
Somebody's going to second.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Tyler Eaton, roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
John Morn of Steins. Never read them.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Boards and assigned committees. Anybody, anything?
Plenary Board has a meeting on Wednesday. I'm sorry.
CIP is meeting Wednesday and Thursday.
Uh, Plenary Board meets on Wednesday. First time we've met this year, so everybody knows budget.
Well, well, Budget Committee on.
Going to be twice this week.
Yeah, uh, but John Scruton and I were there on Thursday night. Uh, John presented the budget to the Budget Committee. Um, some of the members of the Budget Committee commended us for the hard work that we've done, uh, in, you know, getting the budget to where it needed to be. Uh, the biggest challenge, or one of the biggest questions, was the reduction that we made to the merit and compensation line. And the, as you recall, Budget Committee had reduced it by 10. We, having to, last week, uh, get another eight out of the, uh, budget, voted, uh, to take the eight from that line. Just as a matter of clarification, thanks to Betsy's great work, we understand now that all of the salary increases that were given last year, including the 4% COLA for every employee, amounted to about $60,000. So, we are, you know, we're good and safe with having that line at 57. So, that was one of the biggest things that came up from the Budget Committee. Um, again, the $10,000 from Marston, mowing came up. Um, those were the two big ones. I don't remember anything else. Do you?
Those are the two, those are the two that received the most discussion.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a draft of the Budget Minutes, Minutes here. Uh, January 5th, um, we went over the draft warrant articles, um, with the Budget Committee, and, uh, but basically, uh, oh, we, we, we went over the cap, the revenues, the projected revenue.
Correct, yep.
The tax cap, then we looked at the budget, those were the only two items that came up, and then we presented the warrant articles.
Correct, right. Um, so that was all good. I have to say, John Scruton did an excellent job presenting the budget and keeping the discussion moving along. He, the master of saying, may I proceed? So, that was excellent. So, thank you, John, for that.
Yeah, and on the last page of this budget.
Yeah, exactly.
It would be three times before I got there.
He did an excellent job.
John, can I ask one thing about that, since we're just talking about the budget?
Sure.
Is there any way we can put together a chart just for the meeting or that, that says what THOB means, what TH means, what?
Well, they wanted it in the.
Well, because THOB, no one, no one.
And they wanted it here.
All right, yes, we will.
Well, I'm looking at the one I'm showing at the meeting tomorrow, and it still says, right, it doesn't say. Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that seems to be, um.
It was just people were having, in their thought, it was generally for even general public looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Might not know what that means, so.
I think THOB should just be town buildings, because that's really what it is.
Town hall, other buildings. You know what you could do is just, and we talked to Betsy about this once before, was just, put it in the narrative. Just explain it in the narrative.
Yes.
And then you have it all in one spor, spot.
Then that would be, yeah, just something that's, so people aren't guessing, it's the next thing.
Because you have town, line 133 is TH, Town Hall, and then 125 through 127, or 124 through 127, is Town Hall, other buildings.
Yeah, I think one of the confusing things is the building where the SAU is, is still called the Town Hall, whereas this is called the Town Office, or Community Center. It goes by both names.
Yeah, yeah, so just use the narrative. Just put it in the narrative.
So, there's, there's some, there's some built-in ambiguity based on our current naming that could change.
Right, yeah. All right, Town Administrator Report.
Okay. Okay, go see. The town has participated in a Joint Hazardous Household Waste Collection Day with Raymond in the past. They are asking if we will participate again this year. I would like a vote and then a sign, a signed document, I think it's in the signature folder, to participate this year.
John, may I ask, what's the date there, buddy?
Uh, I do not have that.
Sometime in September.
Thank you.
Um, I mean, do you want a motion on that?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that Select Board approve the participation of Nottingham with other local communities for hazardous waste, hazardous household waste collection day on an annual basis.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, Tyler, um, seconded by Tyler Eaton, roll call vote.
Uh, just for clarification, is the, we're making this motion to continue year after year, or is this just for one year?
Just for this year.
Just for this year?
Oh, just for this year? Okay, I said on an annual basis, but.
Okay, well, yeah.
Well, that's, that's why I wanted to clarify.
It gives us the option, so.
Yeah, I think you just.
But Nottingham.
Visit it every year.
Yeah.
Okay, annual's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
That way, we can choose from year to year.
Why wouldn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Morn.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Um, the ARPA, uh, ARPA funds, the container for trash compaction needs to be replaced $10,300 or repaired at $10,890. This was on the 11-14 discussion of ARPA, but I missed it on one of the more recent lists. Um, I would like to have the Board authorized to vote to expend from ARPA for the recycling station container replacement, $10,300. We need to replace it, one way or the other, and we don't have it in the budget.
All right, I'll make a motion that Select Board approve the expenditure of $10,300 from the ARPA funds to replace the recycling station, uh, trash container, compactor container.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett, roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Barlet.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
John Morn, no.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Uh, we need a backhoe at the recycling center. I would like to send out an RFP. Uh, I would expect that this is going to be paid for from ARPA funds, but at this point, I just want to send out the RFP to get the price, uh, with everything that's going on with supply issues, uh, and, um, with inflation, I'd just like to know what we're looking at, and then bring it to the Board, but, um, do I have permission to send out an RFP?
Do you need a motion or just a head nod?
Just a head nod, it's fine with me, because it's not going to, just allowing me to do it.
Fine with me.
It works for me.
Any one object?
I mean, getting, getting the RFP, RFP doesn't commit us to anything, it just gives us an indication of how big the breadbox is.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there's probably three companies that are most likely going to bid, but there may be others as well.
John, can, can, if, this is the road we're going to go down, can we, uh, I know Tyler had brought this up in a couple meetings, the feasibility of buying something that's used as well, price comparison and all that, so.
Yeah, I don't, don't object to that. Another thing is, I mean, we're calling it the, um, transfer station backhoe, but three days a week, it would probably be out doing highway work. Next item is water pressure tanks in the community center. These help to, uh, adjust so that the well doesn't keep starting and stopping every time there's a demand for water. Uh, if we don't replace them, we're probably going to burn out our, uh, well pump. Um, I suggest we use ARPA money for that, $5,800. Uh, the, you know, another option would be taking it out of the expendable trust that we're trying to push money into. I'm not sure how that would look.
Well, what is this for, this place?
This place.
Yeah.
The two big tanks that are in.
Yeah, 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 yep, yep, yep.
They need to be replaced. Um, but, uh, the, the estimate we have is $5,800, um, from Bodette Plumbing, they do a lot of our work.
Have we, uh, put this out to bid?
No, I'll, I'll put it out for request once I know I have funding for it. I don't think it's in that much of an emergency, but I don't think we want to wait three months.
Well, no, no, no. I would be in favor of using ARPA for that.
So, again, this wasn't in the original list of ARPA uses that you gave us, right?
Correct. It was, um, in the Town Hall list that I appended at the end, when we were looking at CIP items and.
Okay.
Uh, items that need to be taken care of. You asked me the three biggest priorities out of the Town Hall list, and this was one of them that I gave.
Okay, so, but according to the latest ARPA list that I have, with the expenditures we had talked about, we were down to, I don't know what, like 250 or 200?
No, we had 309 before you just approved $10,300, so you're at 298,700.
Okay.
298,700.
Yeah, it, it's just the.
Yeah, we, we're dribbling it down, but.
Right, well, and I'm just like dribbling it down like this, how does that impact the other stuff we had on the wish list?
Yeah.
That's all I'm concerned about.
Yeah, you're, you're getting down, so, uh, I mean, the backhoe is going to use up a substantial amount.
Correct.
Up for another big item or two big items, but your, your, your meeting needs, there's been so much deferred maintenance in the community, that it's just a lot of places you need, that's.
So, what, what I saw on the, the, and again, this is December 28th list, in addition to what had been spent, we had engineering for culverts, compactor, receiver box, roof tire storage backhoe, and then the fire department had a whole bunch of stuff that had no prices against it. So, that would, that would be like another 270, that's another 300.
Yeah, although the engineering is no longer in ARPA, because we put it in a warrant article.
Okay, fine. Got it. Okay. I'm good.
Okay, um, I will put out an RFP. RFP.
Wait.
For the, do you want to just proceed, knowing that?
Well, for the water pressure tanks at the community center, you got to put an RFP out for it.
I, I actually could just do quotes, if it's okay with you.
Okay, well, you just said, yeah, that's fine.
The backhoe, I'm doing an RFP, it's so expensive.
Right, okay.
Would quotes be satisfactory, get quotes from three?
Well, the question here said, does the Board authorize us to proceed to replace the water pressure tanks? So.
I had asked to proceed, but Ben had asked to have quotes, so.
Okay.
I'm willing to get quotes.
I'd like, just so to make sure we're doing our due diligence, that we get the right.
Got it. Got it.
Yeah, that's.
Nothing against the person that, that's been doing it, I just want to make sure that, you know.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I, I agree with you, I'll just say that he's.
Oh, he's.
Really good.
Yes, and I, I'm not discrediting that at all.
Yep.
I will say, you went low bid at the library, and they did a number of mistakes there, uh, that have, continuing to cause problems. Uh, and at the Town Hall, the one who did that work, they switched the hot water and the cold water, you know, things like that, so, uh, there have been.
Has this been well-known? I'm just hearing about this now.
Yep, probably, I, this, I don't bring every problem here.
Yeah.
Well, you're bringing more than we knew.
Yeah, um, the, neither one of those were Bodettes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um, uh, there are various options on how to proceed with the oil tank and wastewater drain, um, given the complexity, um, of the building. My suggestion on the oil tank is that we proceed with a plan to put two new tanks in on a poured pad with an enclosing structure, um, in front of the kitchen area, and do that first, have that plumbed to the boilers, then pump the oil that's left in the underground tank up into the new tanks, until you get down to where you're getting.
Sludge.
Material that then has to be taken out by clean harbors. Have clean harbors hot, clean that tank, and then make the decision on closing it. So, that would be the sequencing I would recommend for the oil tank.
When you say closing, are they removing it? Are we just closing it and capping it in place?
That has not been decided yet. I think the first thing we've got to do is decide how we're going to proceed, you know, we need, we need to have oil tanks in place to run the oil burners, and put those in, and then, uh, the, there are advantages and disadvantages to filling it in place with sand or removing it completely. And, uh, I, I, I'm not ready to recommend one of those other options until you see where you are down the road, but you have to do these first steps regardless, which is new tanks, pump out the oil, pump out the sludge and everything, and then you can decide, you probably will decide before you get there, but.
Where are you proposing for this structure to be built?
There's two windows in the kitchen. It would block the window that's closer to the gym. Right, there's a cement.
Yeah.
Lock wall coming out for the electrical stuff. You'd just go right off that and put them right in there, outside, cover them, uh, put walls around them so people can't steal from them, you'd pour a slab, probably the outside structure would be on posts. Uh, you might want to put an Alaskan slab, float it. I don't think you want a foundation and everything else out there, because you've got so much underground. I'm, I'm assuming you could pour a slab for the oil tanks.
Well, before we even do that, let's talk about one other thing that's in that room. If we have to dig up our, our pipes for our septic system, we better know where those suckers are before we put a slab in.
Right, that's why all of these are coming together. We need to have that done, too. That's what this article, that's what I'm saying in this article.
Okay, well, I'd rather deal with just, let's take care of the septic, and then let's discuss, since we don't think or know that our oil tank is leaking, or having an issue, we potentially think it's going to in the future, so I understand getting ahead of the problem, but our toilet.
Right.
Is our number one priority.
Right, but I agree, and, and that's what I talk about here, um, that we need to, um, uh, you know, we need, we need to persuade, proceed with both of those projects.
How would that work, then, John? Because you've just talked about how we would, um, handle the tanks, but where?
I see, yeah, I, I, I had the wastewater drain in there, but I apparently.
You didn't describe where that is in the process.
Yeah, that right there, we need to, we need to develop a plan for how we're going to do that, between the asbestos in the floor, we're going to dig up the floor, uh, I had it somewhere, I must have accidentally deleted it.
Well, so we're getting back, getting back to that right there, all right? I appreciate your detail, and this is not to sound criticism, but weren't we supposed to find out where the leak was, or if there was? Did we ever get the official report from the plumber that camered it to check out everything that was wrong, so that we know exactly why and what we're doing?
Well.
Instead of putting a number out, saying that we're just going to rip and redo everything?
Well, I was there when he was cameraing it, I looked down the pipes with the camera, with him. Um, it's clear that the cast iron pipes are no longer round, they're oblong, they're split on the sides, so that the water is leaking out the sides, and that allows.
All the way through?
Yeah.
Well, see, this is, this is, this is where your explanation to me or us is not clear, about why we are, and when people are watching on TV, th, these details that we're mentioning are big into the reasons of when we tell somebody that it's a $40,000, $30,000 project that we're doing, and we start talking about the asbestos and all the bad stuff, well, why, you know, I'm just saying that, that, we have to be more detail-oriented when we tell.
John Morn, would you feel more comfortable if we asked John Scruton to come back at another meeting with a more detailed plan?
Yes.
About how this would be approached?
Well, I'd feel better for the people that are watching, and the people that know about why we're going to ask them, or we're going to spend $40,000 ARPA money, even though it's something we know we need to do, but we better have some good details.
Yeah, and I'm.
Like with all the other projects we've done with ARPA, uh, we have a better detailed order as to why we're doing it or why we're spending it.
And I want to know the direction of where those new pipes, if we put new pipes in, where they're going to go, because we just spent a ton of money on that kitchen.
Yeah.
And also, what the, what the flow of the process would look like. We have to do this, then this, then this, then this.
Right, if that thing costs 500 bucks, I don't mind spending the money on that, at least we know.
You have to close off the entrance to the building, you're going to have to have.
Give us a big report on it, a comprehensive report.
But I would say, these are both very important, so.
Yeah.
The sooner the better, I would say.
Oh, absolutely. I just want to make sure that we're, I'm not trying to be negative about the thing, I just want to be.
Agree with you.
More focused on what we're doing.
With everything in there for consideration.
Yep, I fully agree, I.
Here we go.
I apologize, I thought it was in there, and somehow it.
Boy, John.
I probably hit delete by mistake. I do that.
You keep, you keep messing up like that, we're not going to hire you full-time.
Yeah, I'm going to be gone by, I'm going to be gone by March, I.
We have two Johns fighting about the John.
John Scrut.
Good one, Steve.
That was actually a good one, Steve.
Um, okay, dedication of the town report. Um, the Board needs to make a decision on individual or, uh, an organization. Uh, you also have a draft of the selectman's report. Both of those need to be in in the next couple of weeks for the town report.
Actually, I will have an updated, uh, version of the Select Board report, for the town report, because I've been working on it, just waiting for a couple more pieces of information.
If we don't have anybody as an individual, I would support an organization.
I mean, can we, can we do both?
Yes.
I mean, myself, I'd like the 300 to be recognized.
Yes, but a big picture, Steve Waltz on the.
Yeah, and, and of the 300, and also, I would like to, if we could do something for Chet Barnes.
Yes.
Who's Chet Barnes?
Uh, he was a resident.
Retired military.[1651.33] Retired military.
Did he pass away?
Yes.
Oh, then, then what we'd normally do is do an in memoriam to Chet Barnes and a dedication. The only other, another organization, I don't know how you would do it, but to all the people who worked on the Maston project.
Let's, let's.
Let's have a game there first.
Let's let Courtney address that in her report.
Okay, the three hundredth in the dedication?
I'm favored in the three hundredth.
And, uh, can you get, can one of you get information to Kelly on Chet?
Yes.
I just want to remind people that one of the most moving moments of the veterans program was Chet was there saluting the flag and it's just, we put a picture in it, it's just very, very powerful.
Oh, if you've got a picture, get that, Kelly, could you please?
Passed away a week and a half later.
Yep, and again, he was, like, Peggy took it, just him saluting the flag as it came down to the, we saw it coming down.
Oh, yeah, that, that's the kind of pictures that we need for, any, anyone have pictures for the town report? Get them to Kelly, um, in the listening audience, but especially if you're going to do in memoriam. Is there anyone else in memoriam that you have that should be remembered that passed away in twenty twenty-two?
Can we check with Lori?
Yeah.
Let's check with Lori.
Yes, I will. Okay, um, vote on warrant articles. If all the warrant articles were adopted, the impact on the twenty twenty-three tax rate, including the operating budget where the selectmen now have it, it would be a one point six percent increase. The four percent is on the operating budget, but when you consider warrant articles, it drops it. So it's a one point six percent tax rate increase.
How does it drop it?
Because when you add up all the individual warrant articles that you're funding with taxes with the, it's, it's.
Is it because we had more warrant articles last year?
Well, your, your, your budgeting is based on the actual operational, but warrant articles are optional, right? They're like optional add-ons.
Yeah, but he's saying if we, how can it, how can it be four percent on the operating budget, but only one point six if we're adding more money to it?
Well, um, last year, your article on the fire department added nine cents. The article on the roads added thirty-seven, this year is forty-eight. Um, the article on the, um, fire truck added twelve cents. The article on the cameras added five cents. The article on the lift at the library added five cents. The article on the reval didn't add anything because it failed.
What did I say?
Hmm?
I don't understand what. Reviewing the tax impact of last year's one article.
So basically, we've got more this year that are zero tax impact because of money coming from someplace else. And then the ones that do have tax impact, it's less than what we had last year.
Actually, as I look at it, it's not that. It, it has to have been that the, uh, the overall tax rate that was set with everything considered was three seventy-seven. And this year, if you add up all the tax rate impact with the projected operating budget at three dollars and eight cents, it comes to three eighty-three.
Only six cents difference?
Yeah. But last year, apparently you underestimated somewhere because the individual impacts here don't add up to three seventy-seven. They add up somewhat less than three seventy-seven, but that's what the tax rate got set at, everything considered. This year it's three eighty.
I'm struggling with this. Am I the only one? Yeah, we do, I know. Um, let's, uh, are you expecting anybody else or is it just you? All right, let's put that aside and take our seven o'clock appointment. Come on down.
By the way, thank you for that exercise in Washington mathematics. I don't know if you care to see it or if you'd like.
No, we don't.
Good, we'll keep it simple.
Sorry.
Are we ready?
Exactly, absolutely.
And we only did that because we know you well.
You didn't want to see my vacation slips. Hi, my name's Tom Duffy, I live at twenty-eight Tuckaway Shores Road in Nottingham, New Hampshire. And I am here on behalf of the Patacaway Lake Improvement Association, uh, where I am the chairman of the Government Relations Committee. I'm here to request that the select board in Nottingham actively support our request to Sarah L Stewart, Director of the Department of New Hampshire. Actually, she's the Commissioner of, of the Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. I sent her a letter last week and it says, Dear Commissioner Stewart, as I'm sure you know, there are plans in process for the addition of thirty-five campsites suitable for RV style camping improved with water and electricity at Patacaway State Park. These will be located on waterfront property directly on North Channel and across from properties along the eastern shore of the lake. It should be noted that large infestations of variable mill foil have been discovered there. We request a public hearing regarding the park expansion. We would like to see this scheduled as soon as possible at, at the Town of Nottingham offices before the planning gets much farther along. As stakeholders in the stewardship of Patacaway Lake, our members should have the opportunity to discuss their concerns openly and have a more thorough dialogue with the Department of Resource Efficiency. The PLIA, the Town of Nottingham, New Hampshire Lakes and the Lamprey River Advisory Committee have all invested many thousands of dollars in conservation efforts within the watershed, including but not limited to lake hosting for the prevention of invasive species, removable of variable mill foil in areas directly connected to the state park rental and launch areas, fire prevention of the forest, water testing and runoff remediation, parentheses, non-point source pollution prevention. PLIA organized and attended an informal session with Johanna Lyons, who explained the progress on the plans and the use of the ARPA funds. We followed that with a local meeting with Dave Richardson, the park manager, and Tara Blaney, the South Region Supervisor. We have a very good working relationship with the park for our lake host program. We expressed our interest and concerns regarding the increase of twenty percent in park expansion. But our members and residents have expressed an urgent need to be heard in a public forum. Please inform us when this hearing can be scheduled. We can assist in the arrangements with the town. Sincerely, Stephen Sarif, our president, happens to be here tonight also. Uh, CC'd on this were Ted Gatzis, Executive Counselor, Andrea Lamareau at NH Lakes, who funds the lake host program. Town of Nottingham Select Board, you all have one. Ben Bartlett received one separately, uh, as a state rep. New Hampshire, the new New Hampshire Senator, uh, who replaced John Reagan, received one. Amy Smagula at DES, who's a large supporter of ours and supplies a lot of free divers and, and money to our program as well. And Ted, Ted Deers, NH DES and Senator Howard Pearl, who's new, uh, hit the senator. Uh, I wanted, I'm, I'm asking, we're requesting that, uh, an active support be made if somebody could call, uh, Commissioner's office and say, we think this is a really good idea. Our opinion is that it's very well intentioned to give people more of a camping experience. Those of you who've been around for a while might remember back in nineteen ninety-eight when they wanted to move the boat launch from the Fundy to this area. And if you look at the diagram, you can see it was right on the east. At the time, they were going to put the boat launch on the east side of the Horse Island Bridge, the connecting bridge. They had three hearings at that point and they were defeated. They, we, and, and after the hearings, they, they removed it and instead dressed up the Fundy launch with twenty-nine parking spaces. So hearings do help get the voices out. And, and what we'd like to see ultimately is a way to work with the higher levels of the state park. Again, great working relationship locally and have them begin to consider contributing in some way or perhaps we can suggest ways where they can participate in the invasive species. State park border there and in where the beach is and where the canoe launch is, is loaded. Twenty percent more campsites, thirty-five campsites is going to have a lot of people swimming off the campsites, putting their boats off the campsites, all of which are, by the way, against park rules, but nobody stops them, can't. They, they don't have the power to police it. So, uh, that's our request.
Tom, wouldn't that fall under Marine Patrol, to police that area? If they're not applying by the park rules, wouldn't Marine Patrol get involved?
I don't know, it's not a Marine Patrol rule, it's a state park rule. State park could probably change that rule unilaterally, but it's not safe because boats are going through there all the time. But with the infestations and with the invasives, it's only going to, uh, create more disturbance in areas that are becoming fragile.
I'm not opposed to this meeting, but I want to make sure. I don't want to go to this meeting and have a bitch fest of everybody complaining about the state park adding thirty campsites. And that's where I've been to enough meetings and, you know, is this going to be an informative meeting? Or is this a meeting where all the residents are allowed now to come and just yell at the state for adding thirty sites? Now, you've been to the meetings, you've seen what happens. That's what I predict is going to be at this meeting. It, it not be a, I understand the plan and I'm for your plan of trying to get the state to pay because of the heavy intense areas of mill foil that are surrounding their campsites, where we should have a special stipend from the state to take care of those areas. But we know the state doesn't do for one if they don't do for all. So the chances of them giving Patacaway, even though it is in their vested interests, probably won't happen.
John, I think out of all the lakes in, in the state, though, I think the state owns quite a bit more shorefrontage on Patacaway than they do any other lake.
True, and it's one of the most popular ones, but they still wouldn't pay the lifeguards more money.
Second most profitable camp.
They still wouldn't pay the lifeguards more money on Patacaway than any other state park. So they had no lifeguards at Patacaway, even though they could have filled the park with more people. But because how the state works, everything mandated of, good for you, is same for everybody. They had to cut their capacity down this summer. And that's just, again, I'm not, I'm just saying, and, and again, I, you, you know how much I support these lakes. You know, I mean, I've spent my life, for my whole life, the whole place.
I just wonder, like, like, you're right, I think the meeting could end up going that way, potentially. But I wonder, I, I'm thinking back to USA Springs and the work of people like the Mills and everybody else who just kept going at it and at it and at it and at it relentlessly. And, you know, how much of an influence that had. So I'm just.
Well, actually, uh, if you take a poll of, as we have informally, of people and how they feel about it, because we brought this up at our annual meeting when we first learned about it in June, when I first read about it in the paper and talked, called Ted Gatzis and said, who do I talk to? And he got somebody to call me in about ten minutes, which I thought was pretty impressive. And I think it's important to have the transparency to make sure that the three or four million dollars that they're getting, there's other things besides, you know, variable mill foil contributing to that. And the ARPA funds are not going to be dedicated to that. That's one of the interesting angles of that, is that the ARPA funds are for the infrastructure improvements, which means we may even get a couple of new septics out of the state park. They're adding a new bathhouse anyway, they're improving another bathhouse. There's lots of ways, and we've already suggested a lot of this stuff informally in our little meetings with them, but nothing is of record. And I think it's important to have things of record. I don't think it'll be a total bitch because a lot of people are for expanding it. The locations is a little sensitive about why you're doing it right there on the water. You have other spots that they, it could be done higher up on the area. I mean, yes, I know, RVs, RVs with what, it, water, it, these are now upgraded. They're looking at a plan to have different levels of camping experience so that they can charge more money for it. I think it's entrepreneurial, but you can't build if you don't have, you can't build properly without a good foundation. And the foundation of maintenance or the foundation of being able to, to, to maintain and police what they have should be brought into the conversation. And they should be part of the entire stewardship of the lake like we are. They have been, they have been unwilling other than to let us do certain things. They have never contributed, to my knowledge, a penny and I've been doing this a long time.
See, and that, that's the big elephant in the room, is that whatever they do there, right? There's going to be cost imposed on the town, whether it's via mill foil or public safety, right? If you increase the, the.
Thirty, thirty, twenty percent.
Yeah, twenty percent more people going there, that means could translate to twenty percent more police emergency rescues, police calls. You know, drunken, drunken campers. And then, then with the RVs, you know, they have septic tanks on them. Well, you know, are people going to be dumping them in the site before they roll out? You know what I mean? And then there's, there's all that, it's like.
Well, they're going to put a dump station.
Well, right, right, I know.
Whether people use it or not is another story.
Given, you know, like, you know, a couple of examples were mentioned, how like they just didn't really, you know, manage their own resource very well. You know, do they have the experience to manage an, an RV population within the park? You know, what are the parks they do in that? And, and are these people, do they know how to manage that clientele?
This is great, I hope you come to the hearing if we haven't.
Yeah, right, right. It's one thing to have a dump tank, but there's always going to be some drunken yahoo that just says, I want to get the heck out of here. And he dumps his septic tank on the ground and books, you know, books into the gate. You know what I mean? So, and then what? Then what happens? Does the next person have to deal with that? Does, you know, is, you know, the, the, the park's going to have, you know, I, I'm not against them expanding per se, but this, this business of, of not participating with us for, with everything from emergency planning to, to the mill foil, you know, all of this, yeah, you know, that, where they basically push us off and say, it's your problem, that's got to end.
It's time we be heard. It, it, the discussion has to happen. It, it had, it has to happen at some level and I think the, there's always going to be, there's always going to be bitching. I mean, look at our town media, you know, there's always going to be that. But some air gets, you know, some air gets cleared. And what we're looking for in terms of their participation in stewardship of the lake is not going to come out of the ARPA funds necessarily, but it's going to bring to their attention that if they're getting a windfall of three or four million dollars, maybe they can, maybe they can raise the, the, from five, the ticket per person from five dollars to six dollars. And that would give us three thousand dollars a year for lake stewardship. I mean, there's lots of things to address here and it's never been done.
What, you're here tonight, what's your ask? What would be the ideal thing that you want to go away with having us agree to do?
I want you, I, I, I want a select person to call Commissioner Stewart's office and say, we received this letter, we were CC'd on this letter about the park expansion and we think a public hearing is a good idea. That's all.
I'd like to throw it out to Ben, since you're the state rep and on the select board, I, I think you would be.
I would be happy to do that.
You're my man.
I would be happy to do that because I fully agree with what Tony had said.
Thank you.
Now.
You mentioned ARPA funds, is, is.
You're not referring to ours.
Did the park get a slice of ARPA funds?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so you're not talking about the.
No. Is that part of the two million dollars that they keep talking about?
No, they, the park, okay, so let me catch you up just very quickly. The park had, the park, yeah, the park had, I'll say, five million dollars, I don't know the exact amount, of ARPA funds were going to the state parks.
Oh, okay.
For improvement. They had six parks in the plan, five or six parks were named. They started engineering. Point is, is that they're spending all of this money without any input other than their own about where they'd like to spend it. They're down to two parks.
Yeah.
Because they found Indian artifacts in one and they found, they're down to two parks. So a lot of money is coming into Patacaway and a lot of money is going to Jericho, I think it is. Yeah.
There's nothing to say, it's three million that they want, they're going to spend on Patacaway.
What's that?
It's three million.
Yeah, three, yeah, it's a little over that now, because they're, they're getting a little more.
But there's nothing to say they won't find anything over there that could halt.
It, 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 it's possible, but the, the fake Indian bones that I, oh, no, nevermind.
I have Indian arrowheads.
Spotted frog, anyone? Get the paint up. But the, um, the thing is, is that it, it brings up a larger question. Okay, there's our issues from the stewardship part of the lake. There's our issues as the butters on the lake, as property owners on the lake. There's all of those things, but it's all the town things that, that you were very articulate about. I mean, there's a hospital, how much you get for every police call?
I don't know, I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, um, somebody got high and drowned and there was a big response, you know? And, and I remember at the time that we had asked to, you know, asked, I, I kind of wanted to impose, but I wanted them to start participating with our fire chief and police chief in regular emergency management planning meetings. And I also wanted to get a public safety annex up there, just a shed even with, you know, where the, where they could store the boat.
For stuff, yeah.
And they could respond directly there instead of going to the fire station first and so on. And they're like, nope, 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 nope.
Okay, uh, can you capture an action item, please, John Scruton, that says that Ben's going to make that call? Uh, can you capture an action item, please, John Scruton, that says that Ben's gonna make that call, of course?
Who's gonna make the call?
Ben Bartlett, yeah.
Okay. And what the action item is, is a report back?
Yes.
We can talk offline, I got a whole laundry list of things I would love to bring up. You know?
What public hearings are about.
I mean, they're, you know, maybe they're not all practical, but it'd give you food for thought.
I'd be happy to talk offline.
Cool, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
By the way, thank you all for putting funds back in for the invasive species, and for the budget. It's, the time is now, you know, we're trying to capture it while it's budding. And we even had divers going in, in, in forty-degree weather. It was tough.
I, I, I do think at some point, like, the question has come up that money is accumulating in the fund, and what is happening with that money? And why is the money just sitting there?
Oh, we're, believe me, we can, we can do more with it. We've been trying to be conservative, we've raised money elsewhere. Uh, you know, if we can, we, we do have to, there's enough to be paying divers, we have so many good problems here.
I'm not, I'm not saying spend it, I'm just saying that, like, if there is something that is a bigger expense that you guys are trying to save for, or, you know, if, just, what's the right answer when people say, "Why are we letting that money? Why do we continue to put money into it if they're not spending it?"
Are we waiting for a catastrophe for the fact that we have to spend twenty-five, thirty thousand to bomb the lake or something?
Well, there's going to be-
Oh, I, sure.
And it may even be this year coming up.
Ghost code, should happen.
It, it's gonna maybe even be this year coming up. What we're hoping for is that the improvement of the chemicals that remediate it, and actually kill it at the roots, are getting better. And they're getting better because they're sort of isolated, there's, there's one brand now that isolates it in a time-release fashion, so you can actually kind of put it, I'll say, put it in the clump. But otherwise, you know, it's, it's, it's very costly, you know, to use that. But we could, we can use more paid divers. We haven't had it in our budget, you know, everybody wants to be self-sufficient, and we have come to you for Lakehost funds, and you have given us, you know, the, the money. And we're sensitive about it, we don't, we wanna do our share, too.
No, I appreciate that.
I think we could raise money if we set a steel cage match between Tony and Governor Sununu. Somewhere down there. Ten bucks a head.
All right, thanks, guys.
I'll referee that.
Be careful, Tyler, there's an opening in the dunk tank.
I was gonna say, at least a dunk tank, I could do a dunk tank.
All right, let's go back, John.
Okay, the reason for the difference in percentage. Last year, uh, this, I mean, this month, you had predicted a tax increase of three dollars and fifty-nine cents. The actual was three dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Okay.
So I'm using the actual, the three seventy-seven, to get to where we are at three eighty-three. The percent increase over the projection last year would be closer to six percent. But it, you have to do it over the actual tax rate for, for this year. Now, what drove the tax rate for this year apparently were other factors, overlay, and, uh, there must have been some other factors entered in, because the, the tax rate increase was greater than the projection, and that's why the difference, and that's why it's only a four percent over what the actual tax rate was for two thousand twenty-two to the projection for twenty-three.
You know, John, no offense, but you are speaking in a totally different language.
I mean, you just, I, I think you're-
You had so many points there that were just different, that I don't even know what you're talking about.
You, you're, you're probably technically accurate.
Absolutely.
But if we're struggling to wrap our heads around it, it's not a message that is gonna resonate when we try to explain to people what we're doing.
I'll work at a better explanation, thank you. I'll translate.
Thank you.
Or I'll find somebody who can translate.
Bring a, translate my language.
Bring in a fifth grader.
No.
To get it down to our level of understanding.
No, it's, uh, it is a, fund accounting is a unique, uh, unique budgeting. Anyway, moving on. So, the, uh, projection for the tax rate is three dollars and eight cents on the operating budget. Um, for, um, and that article will wait until the budget committee-
And again, just to be clear for people, the three dollars and, how much?
Eight.
Eight cents, whatever, is for the town's portion of the tax rate. Not the total set number tax rate.
It's only for the town's portion of the operating budget.
Again, that's right. This is where the clarity, when we start throwing numbers out, of what we're talking about.
No.
Because I know that, but they don't know that.
I understand. Um, so, does the committee recommend Article B, which is ninety thousand dollars?
Okay, wait, 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 so I just wanna talk about how we've done this in the past.
Yes.
And I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we always did the budget one anyway. Article A or one here, I thought we always did that. Did we wait in the past?
Yeah, I think so, until we had a file number to, to, to vote on it all at once.
Okay.
Because it's going, the number that goes in here is the budget committee number.
Fine, okay, I'm good with that. Now, the way I wanna do this is the way that we've done it every other year. And I want, um, someone to make the motion, read the full article, somebody seconds it, and then we roll call vote on it. Because that's how we've done it every year, and I think it's important that we read the article as well. Okay? So, we can start with Article B.
All right, are we approving, or?
Uh, recommend is the word.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that the select board recommend, uh, Article B to the ballot, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and," spelling error there, "appropriate the sum of ninety thousand dollars to be added to the previously established Town Building Maintenance and Repair Expendable Trust Fund. The sum is to come from unassigned fund balance. This expendable trust is used for maintenance and repair of heating, plumbing, or other major systems in town buildings or facilities. There is zero tax impact."
Second.
Uh, Tony Dumas, um, made the motion, Tyler Eaton beat you by a half second for the second. And, um, we'll take a roll call vote, please.
Ivan Barlet.
I, Tyler Eaton.
I, John Warren.
I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
Select Board recommends this Article five to zero.
Yes.
These, we're going one by one through our warrant articles that we're putting forward.
All right, I'll make a motion that the select board recommend Article C uh, to the ballot, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars for highway reconstruction and maintenance work for work on Flutter Street and Oak Ridge Road, top coat to protect the base, Deerfield Road reconstruction, or other roads in Nottingham if a priority rises. This is a non-lapsing appropriation per RSA thirty-two colon seven, section six, and will not lapse until the work is complete or not later than one year after the end of fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, whichever occurs earlier. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is forty-eight cents per thousand dollars of property valuation."
So, can we talk about these before we do anything? No, is that not, not right to talk about? I have a question on it.
Let's, let's have a second.
You need a second, and then we'll talk about it.
We'll have a second, and then we'll discuss it. I need a second.
Oh, I'll second it, fine. Sorry, my bad. I'm more on my train of thought of what I'm rolling on.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so this, you asked to have a list of roads, and this is the list of roads that John provided.
That's my problem.
Well, you asked for the list, this is his list, so if you wanna change it, now's the time to change it.
Because, again, we are putting, we took from three hundred thousand to four hundred. We took a hundred out of our budget and threw it into here. All right? Now, I, obviously know where Flutter Street is. I know where Oak Ridge is, and I know where Deerfield Road is. Each one of those roads, if you were to drive on today, you would think they're all set and perfect. Right? Well, think about it, you're the regular person just driving down the road, it's flat, it's smooth, it's all blacked off, it looks great.
Maybe Flutter is, but.
Well, Oak Ridge over there is, is not that-
It's in need of repair, but anyway, go ahead.
Right. Well, we're asking the town, when you read this, to put a four hundred thousand dollar value. Now, remember, I'm reading, I'm, I'm trying to say, when the average voter goes in and looks this, that doesn't have the detail that we have, is this the right wording we wanna put forward? And it's what I'm asking you guys.
Sounds to me, John, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's almost a dollar amount that you, you might have an issue with.
No, I have the question of putting the roads on there.
The roads.
And saying, this particular, because when I drive down Flutter, I was like, wow, people were even asking. What was wrong with Flutter before? And now you think it's almost done, but it's not done. We know it's not done.
Yeah, and that's where, I could reverse the order and put "top coat to protect the base" on Flutter and Oak Ridge, but it, when you pave a road, you put a base down, and a year later you come back with a top coat. The general public doesn't know that necessarily.
This is, I'm just asking the question of this board. If they feel that this is the proper way, I'm, I'm willing to go with it, but I just wanna make sure, when we vote on this and put it through, we know the repercussions.
So, I think, I think it, there's more of a risk if you have generic language, like four hundred thousand dollars to do roadwork.
Right.
Right?
Against, we're discussing, it's a perfect trick.
Yeah, and, but, um, I also do think that the onus is on us, particularly when we introduce warrant articles at the deliberative session, to make sure that we explain all of this, and in fact, you know, in the past, we've done presentations. Our town administrator has helped us with presentations. I also think it's on us to make sure that we put together an exceptional voter's guide that is put out between deliberative and voting day.
That is gonna be the key.
Yeah.
And on top of that, I mean, if you think back, I think the years where we have done a better job at, with our narrative, at town meeting or deliberative session, I think we do better in the votes when we have a better explanation to the people that show up.
Absolutely.
Right, but again, and, and again, my concern for when I read these articles is the new SB two, is for the fact that you could have a thousand people show up to vote, twelve hundred to show up for that day. All right? Town meeting, I went to a lot of them over my twenty years here. There was no way those even close to a thousand, those even close to five hundred at a town meeting. This can easily swing with the wrong thought process because of SB two.
Well, I think it comes back to what Donna says, if we put a-
Okay, as long as we're all agreed, we better have that written, we better have that done.
So as long as we're talking about it.
And it better be at a good pri, I mean, just saying, 'cause-
I, I think there's a risk in adding the one hundred to the three hundred. Because now, if it gets voted down, now all we've got is two hundred. That, to me-
Which means we can't do all of these roads.
Which means we can't do-
But what I think has been discussed is the possibility of taking a hundred thousand out and taking one of these roads like Deerfield out, or, um, or maybe the top coat for Flutter and Oak Ridge, and put them in one article, and put Deerfield in another article.
Yeah, the only thing with that is then people start, uh-
Vaporizing roads.
Warrant article fatigue.
So, I mean, it's just-
Dirty warrant article fatigue now, look at my-
It, it, it's a risk.
Again, I'm, I, I think if we have a good explanation, and we can sit there and we explain what the four hundred is, and da, 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 and it's a common practice, we've done it for years this way, and this is the case, and we get that word out, and we do a really good job of people knowing.
It'll also be important to explain to people, you know, especially at deliberative, why we took a hundred out of the budget and put it in the warrant article because of the difficulty presented by the tax cap.
Sure.
We gotta tell them, that's why we did it this way this year, you know? Be totally transparent and straightforward about that.
Again, that's what, okay, I'm good.
All right.
I seconded it, so.
All right, so we've got, uh, Tony Dumas made the motion to recommend the article. Uh, John Warren seconded it, we'll take roll call vote.
I, Ben Barlet.
If, if I may, are you okay with my reversing the order? I think it makes more sense, as I heard it read. The third line to read, "Maintenance work for, uh, top coat to protect the base on Flutter Street and Oak Ridge, comma, Deerfield, et cetera," just to change that order.
Yeah, the only thing is, is that you've gotta close parentheses after the word "base" with no open parentheses in front of it.
Yeah, that all, right, I think that comes out, and I reverse it in front of Flutter and Oak Ridge.
Okay. Roll call.
I, Ben Barlet. I, Tyler Eaton.
I, John Warren.
I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes five, zero.
Oh, boy. All right.
Doing a great job, Tony.
Yeah. I'll make a motion-
I'm going, you wanna quit?
No, I'm good, I'm good. I'll make a motion that the select board recommend Article D to the ballot, which reads, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ninety thousand dollars to be used for engineering projects, including culverts on Kelsey Road and Cooper Hill Road, and the library parking lot. The sum is to come from unassigned fund balance, majority vote required. There is zero tax impact."
Second.
The motion was moved by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett. Roll call vote, please.
I, Ben Barlet. I, Tyler Eaton.
I, John Warren.
I, Donna Danus.
I, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes five, zero.
And the way you're reading it, you want me to take the word "estimated" out, I assume?
For what?
No.
You're reading that there is zero tax impact, or I have written, "There is zero estimated tax impact."
Didn't I say "estimated"?
No.
Oh, I must have skipped over-
You want the word "estimated" in there?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
No.
Well-
Yes.
We always do "estimated."
Do we?
Yeah. Yeah.
Actually, you, you, you estimate with a zero. The estimated tax impact is zero per thousand of estimated property valuation, is the language.
Right.
We do use estimated.
But we, read, how you just wrote it? I, you know, just read, read what you just said right there, read that.
Warren, at last year, the twenty twenty-two warrant article, "The estimated tax impact is zero dollars per thousand of property valuation."
It's right there.
You wanna use that language?
Yes.
That is better than saying, "There is zero estimate," I just think it's-
That's fine, that's fine.
It's more-
Yep, that's fine.
We're figuring it to be nothing, and it shouldn't change.
I use the old language on all of these that are zero.
Okay, I'm just, again, I just think is, when we say "there is," that puts doubt.
To date, to the ones we've gotten to, yes. Yes.
So far.
Yeah, the word is "recommended," Steve.
Fine.
Yeah. All right, so we're good with D?
Yeah, but before we go to E, oh, yeah, we all voted on D. On E, John, why, like, the estimated tax impact is point zero zero seven, less than one cent per thousand?
So people don't think it's seven cents. I don't, I usually round everything, you want me to round that to one cent?
No. No, I've just, is that something that we are doing? We haven't done that in the past, so is that something we're doing consistently here? Or is that the only one that's less than a cent?
That's the only one that is less than-
Okay.
I like it.
Yeah.
Let's move on.
I like it.
So you want me to say less than one cent?
Yeah, just read it as he's got it written.
Okay. All right, I make a motion that the select board recommend Article E to the ballot, which reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars to be used for improvements to the library entrance, including accessibility for ADA-compliant door-opening device. The sum is to come from unassigned fund balance. Majority vote required, the estimated tax, if it's coming from unassigned fund balance.
How can there be a tax?
How can there be?
That was a mistake, it wasn't going to be, you didn't have that coming from fund balance, sorry.
So.
So that's not, okay, you're gonna have to reread.
So, final sentence being, there is zero estimated tax impact per thousand doll, uh, per one thousand of property valuation.
No, what I had intended is that somehow when I was doing the cut and paste, the sum is to come from unassigned, fund balance is incorrect, that's not one of the board, ones the board decided to use fund balance on.
We're making, yeah, this is a straight warrant article.
Right, straight warrant articles.
Take that, so Tony, read it.
That line's not there.
All right, so I'll read it again. So Article E to read if. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,000 to be used for improvements to the library entrance, including accessibility. For ADA compliant door opening device. Majority vote required, the estimated tax impact is 0.007 dollars, less than one cent per $1,000 of property valuation.
Second.
Second.
Motion to recommend made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Tyler Eaton, roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes by a vote of five to zero.
All right, I'll make a motion to the select board recommend Article F to the ballot, which reads to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000. To be added to the highway truck capital reserve fund previously established, majority vote required, the estimated tax impact is 0.12 dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moore, roll call vote.
If you're gonna vote, no, you can still vote, sorry. Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes five to zero.
Uh, John, in your notes. Is it possible to? To have for, I mean, I don't know, and you know, you have a lot of things going on, I apologize, but. What are the fund balances, what are the balances in these funds? You don't have to tell me now, I don't care. I'm just saying for maybe tomorrow, if you have it, just in case somebody had asked me during deliberation when we go over these articles. Somebody might ask what's in that balance, so I just want to be able to say. It's 200,000 and a truck costs a half a million, so that it's, there's justification for why we're.
Well, you've got all of the fund balances in last year's town report.
Okay, good, nevermind, I'll just look at that.
The problem is that.
No, I've seen the report, I'm fine, I'll look it up, I'll have it all.
What was in the report was what was the beginning balance of this year without what was added or subtracted.
It was what was going in.
Before the warrant articles.
I can give you, I wouldn't want to put it in here.
No, I don't, no, no.
Fine, but I can give you.
I don't want it in here, I just want it for my rec.
48,000 in this one.
I want it for my record, so when I'm sitting at the board tomorrow, that I have.
You're referring to the.
What's in the town report, plus what was approved last?
I'll look it up.
The truck has approximately 48,000.
Just for the rec, yeah, go ahead, John, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, just for the record, the reason why I had voted for it, because if you look at, I have the CIP thing right here, uh, in the next few years, there's not a lot of, uh. Big expenses for the highway department, but come 2028, you've got two, and we will not have enough money if we do not contribute.
Which is why you save, right? Which is why you save.
Yeah.
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 Okay. All right, next one, Tony.
2028. Uh, what's that, G?
Yeah.
G, okay. Make a motion to the select board recommend Article G to the ballot, which reads to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000. To be added to the fire vehicles slash SCBA capital reserve fund previously established. Majority vote required, the estimated tax impact is 0.12 dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
Motion to recommend made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett, roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes by a vote of five to zero.
All right, I'll make a motion that the, to, that the select board recommend Article H to the ballot, which reads to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum. Of $20,000 to be added to the previously established revaluation capital reserve fund for the purpose of performing. A statutory revaluation of property every five years. The sum is to come from unassigned fund balance. Majority vote required, uh, what's, what's the language here? The, uh.
Yeah, the, the new, the old language, the estimated tax impact is 0.00 per thousand of property valuation.
Yeah, that.
What he said.
What he said.
Second.
We're gonna go with that, second.
Yeah.
Okay, motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett, roll call.
Question, I will get, I'm sorry, guys, I wasn't here, so when you guys discuss this on Tuesdays, just want to make sure I'm on the same page. We're using leftover money we had last year to put, to pay for, for this year.
Well, there's two sources going into this. One being that according to your fund balance policy, whatever you had in excess of 12% at the time of tax rate setting is available for use on. The following warrant for reducing expenditure tax impact. Secondly, you had revenue increase of almost 100,000, which is also going into your fund balance, so you can use that. And then you had a small amount of unexpendited appropriations, which will lapse into fund balance, so that's how you get.
Got you, got you, and the reason why we're doing 20 instead of 10 is because of the fact that we voted it down last year.
No, last year was 20 that got voted down.
We do, we have typically done 20 per year.
But there's enough left, so doing 20, as long as you put it in this year, you'll be okay.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes by a vote of five to zero.
I'll make a motion that the select board recommend Article I to the ballot, which reads to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be added. To the invasive species prevention and eradication removal expendable trust fund previously established, majority vote required, the estimated tax impact. Is 0.01 dollars per $1,000 of property valuation.
I'll second.
Uh, motion to recommend made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moore, roll call vote.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes by a vote of five to zero.
I'll make a motion to the select board recommend Article J to the ballot to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $40,000. For the purpose of purchasing the necessary fuel, supplies, equipment, and maintenance to run the ambulance and billing services. For the, for 2023 and to authorize the withdrawal of $40,000 from the ambulance and equipment replacement special revenue fund created for this purpose. Majority vote required. The estimated tax impact is zero per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Ben Bartlett, roll call.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes by a vote of five to zero.
I'll make a motion that the select board recommend Article K to the ballot, which reads to see if the town will vote. To establish a police technology equipment expendable trust fund for the purchase and major repairs of technology equipment for the police department, including but not limited to. Mobile data terminals, cameras, servers, radios, tasers, radar units, et cetera, naming the board of selectmen as agents to expend and further. To raise and appropriate $10,000 into the fund, majority vote required, the estimated tax impact is 0.01 dollars per thousand dollars of property valuation.
Second.
Tony Dumas made the motion to recommend, Ben Bartlett seconded, roll call.
Hi, Ben Bartlett.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Donna Danis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
Motion to recommend passes by a vote of five to zero.
You have two petitioned articles.
Hang on a second, please. Do, why do we not have an article to? Do we not need one for the ambulance?
We just did that, that was J.
Your, your, your money in this revolving fund stays in the ambulance fund, it doesn't have to be appropriated to the fund, it only needs to be appropriated out of it.
Never mind, okay, I got confused. I'm just checking to make sure we haven't missed anything.
Purchase the next ambulance, we had this discussion at CIP, I think it was, and we decided that we didn't need an article because the money would automatically stay in the ambulance special revenue fund until we appropriated it out.
Yeah, it's fed from their billing.
Yes.
And it stays there until.
Yeah.
Until it's voted on.
Okay, I'm just trying to make sure we didn't miss anything, because it feels, the list feels light to me.
Well, that was.
I think we're covered, I was just comparing it to last year for all the normal ones that we've done. Okay.
I mean, I could easily have missed one.
Nine, 10, that's 11 warrant articles.
Okay.
Um, there are two more which have petitioned articles in my first, uh, FYI. Shall the, shall we, starting with Article L.
Uh, did you hear back from the town attorney on that?
Yeah.
Yes, not the town attorney, um, LG, I, I sent to the municipal association, and they say just amended at the deliberative session, it's a scribblal era, they called it.
Because on the article that was written, uh, the petition article, that I saw it, um, they wrote that the town adopted the 4% in 2023.
Right.
And not 2022. So come, somebody will have to be who's petitioning the article at deliberation, will have to bring that up. It's not up to us, it's not our article, we have nothing to do with it, but.
To amend it.
Sure, the petitioner will.
The petitioner will, and the petitioner.
I have told the petitioner the result of the legal.
Yes. Just in case you guys read that and didn't see it, that's.
Yeah. All right, so now you're gonna ask us to vote on the two petition warrant articles?
We did not vote on those.
Uh, you have to vote on at least M, because it's a money article.
We did not.
It's a money article, you have to vote on a money article.
When there's a, when there's a budget.
We don't have to.
Oh.
We historically have. But we don't have to.
I think we should leave that up to the voters. We didn't, we didn't vote on the, the petition articles last year?
Were there any money?
No, there were some that we didn't. Well, this 4% came in.
Well, that, that's not a money article, M is a money article, to raise and appropriate 40,000, the budget committee has to vote on that one, too.
Cast it out, yeah.
M, you have to vote on.
Yeah.
L, I think it's optional.
Yeah, L, we don't have to.
And it may be politically better not to, I don't know, that's a political decision, M, though, I'm pretty sure you have to vote on M.
Yeah, whenever you have the words raise and appropriate, that means we've got to weigh in on it. Uh, say on the budget committee.
Now, again, I spoke to the guy who wrote this one, too, but I'm just gonna ask the question to the board, why do we do it?
Do what?
Before the warrant, warrant article?
Before ourselves.
Well, that's the town people.
We could have, John, nobody brought it up.
Okay.
We could have, for sure.
Right.
Yeah. That, that, we didn't seem to go that way.
No, that's fine, no, I'm good, just.
Yeah, we could have.
I'm ready to vote for it, I'm, I'm supportive of it, so.
Vote only on M?
M.
Yeah.
Same, same format?
Do we have M in front of us?
Yeah.
It's under the FYI eight.
Number eight, on the, whatever page.
FYI eight.
Okay.
All right, uh, I'll make a motion to the select board recommend Article M to the ballot. Which reads, shall the town of Nottingham raise and appropriate $40,000 for the calendar year of 2023? In order to contract with a property management firm to make repairs to facilities as needed according to priority. As determined by the select board and to provide maintenance of facility grounds. Uh, I'm just gonna read it exactly as it says, uh, tax impact, uh, 0, 0.05 dollars per thousand.
Yeah, I gotta rewrite that.
Yeah.
Language. Match the rest.
Now, can you do that on a petition article?
Yeah, the petitioner is gonna have.
Didn't put that on there, we have to, because.
You added that, okay, no, that's fine, yeah, I got you.
We have to add the tax impact as part of our.
Yep.
Requirement to put the tax impact of all warrant articles. Doesn't come from the petition.
No, I'm fine, yeah, I understand. I was under the impression that this warrant article was for to create a position and not contract out to a contractor, so to speak, to do this.
I thought I heard that discussion, but that's not what it says.
I don't think we'd get as much for our dollar having a contractor versus an employee. Well. And again, I had, again, I had a discussion with, so I'm gonna, you know, I'll give you my, my.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My take on this. We might, but again, the full-time employee we bring in, if what we can accomplish this year, we might not get to do next year. So by contracting out and having the plumber come in or had this guy come in, trying to find a handyman or a full-time that had benefits and had everything to it. Might be more tougher to find an employee. Than it is to hire a company that come in, you're right, the hiring the individual companies is going to be expensive, right? But finding somebody that's qualified, that's gonna come into work, that'll be able to do any electrical work, that'll be able to do any plumbing type of work. You know, replacing a toilet if it breaks or something, you know, I mean, there's certain things where it's, and this is a way of getting that. These immediate projects that are right in front of us, that we see, that we know. You know, like the bubbler outside, which would be great, you know, the one you put your bottle in that work, that doesn't work? You, no one can, your general handy person can't fix that, you need a plumber to come in, probably take the unit out, put it in, those are services contracted where this money would actually be. More focused on getting these projects that we can't have our person to do.
So.
The bubbler is actually shut down because of water quality, we don't want people drinking the water when we don't have.
Okay, there, there's another reason.
So, but I'm, I'm.
I was just using that as an example, it's something that's hard broken immediately.
You've got me, I, I do have a question, though, about the language of contract with a property management firm. So that means that money is used for a contract and none of that money can go towards a full-time person. Because the language specifically says contract property management firm. So we can't use it on an employee.
Unless it was amended at deliberative session.
We can't use it to hire somebody.
But again, this is only good for one year, too, right? This isn't going for.
Correct.
And we've already basically said where we've tried to even put in our budget about hiring an employee, and that didn't. The $15 an hour, which we wanted to play the guy to plow or shovel or do the stuff, we, he's not existed.
Understood, all I'm saying is that this article says property management firm. Right, and so that, that does not mean that any of this money goes towards a full-time employee, it can't.
No.
And does that, is the?
I had no int, I had no interpretation that, from what I knew of this, was that it was going to, for us to hire an employee.
Okay, fine.
For, of the town to.
But does the language property management firm, does that lock us in in any way, or is that a broad enough? Expression or a broad enough term that if it was an individual who does maintenance projects?
Like a, well, he'd be his own private contractor, he'd be a, he wouldn't get a, he wouldn't get a W2 from us.
I'm, I'm just questioning property management firm.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, to me, that sounds like an agency.
Yes.
Not an individual.
That's what I'm getting at, yes, but again, would that be because we're going to see. I mean, unless we're having Bill Tromble here, who may have many hats, you know, I'm just sorry, but. There could be many different people where contract that, that somebody's contracted getting to come in. Depending on what the job is needed.
Yeah.
I, I, I think. It'd be better if this were amended at deliberative session to make it a little broader as far as, uh, if you wanted a contractor, make it a contractor, but. Don't specify property management firm.
Or say something like property management contractor or firm.
Or, or to contract with a firm, or to contract, you know.
Well, the bigger the organization is, the more of a chunk they take out of it.
Yeah, exactly.
Versus a. One or two man show.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, but we're going to hear, and again, I'm not trying to, just. I think this should be amended. But you know, priorities are determined by the select board, I always interpret it as this is that, hey, we're hiring the plumber for $5,000 or wherever to come redo the water line here or whatever like this. And that's where that, that check mark, that cash is coming from, and then when we get somebody else to come in and say, hey, he's doing. Adding another door to the extra conference room, whatever down there, contractor B's, Billy's home approved, whatever, he's saying $5,000, but we're gonna pay him $5,000, that comes out of this. That's how property maintenance and facility ground was for stuff that needed, if we had to say.
I think.
They'd hire the landscaper to come and rip out all the side of the brush against the side of the building, because it's causing thing, we. Check mark 12 or 2,500 bucks for that company to come in, that's where I thought this money was gonna go, help pay for the problems we have.
Yeah, yeah, but I, I think the vision was that there is. There is a point of contact. For people to raise these issues that need to be fixed with, and that. raise these issues that need to be fixed with, and that person or point of contact is responsible for executing on them, rather than the town administrator acting like a general contractor and bringing in individuals.
I mean, I think it's gonna be amended, I mean, I, I don't think they have an issue amended, and either we said, hey, this is what we're worried about. You know, we're not looking to sign on with some...
When do warrant articles, petition warrant articles have to be in?
Tomorrow.
At end of day?
Yes.
Okay.
Could we connect with Gary and say, we'd rather see different language here? Oh, he'd have to get his twenty-five.
He has to get twenty-five signatures, and that's a top, long haul.
Yeah, I got it, got it, forgot.
On a weekday.
All right, given that, do we want to make a vote on it?
I already made the motion, I don't think we had a second yet.
I'll second it. That we're gonna have to be amended.
Well-
We can't amend it here.
I know.
We can only suggest.
Yeah.
I'm just... Do you feel we have to vote on it?
Yes.
I mean-
You don't have to vote tonight. You have to vote before you put the warrant posting.
Well, we typically have our votes all before it goes to the budget committee.
Yeah. That's, that's not a legal requirement, but that is.
Okay, motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by Tyler Eaton, let's do roll call vote.
Based on the warding, no.
Hi, Tyler Eaton.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Danus.
Uh, Tony Dumas, no. But only because I'd rather see it amended at, at the meeting.
I think, uh, no, I'm...
Good enough.
Yeah.
Uh, motion to recommend passes by a vote of three to two.
Now, does the board have a preference on the order of the articles? It doesn't that have to be done at this time?
What, how many meetings do we have between now and deliberative?
One or two.
Okay. I would like to discuss the order at the next meeting so that everybody has a chance to think about it. At that same time, I would like us to figure out who on the board is gonna present each article, as we've done in the past.
Well, I think department heads can present their own.
Put, put the article forward. We've always, the board has always divvied out-
Yeah, we read them out loud, like I just did, and then we let the department head or chief or whatever come up and All right. Give their narrative, so...
I do believe it's, the onus is on us to make sure that we are prepared and knowledgeable, and can, can explain them as well, to set up or to tee up the department head and to show support by the board.
Yeah.
But mostly the main presentation of it comes from the department head.
We should probably have a, a chair for them next to us at the table, so that they're not standing out in the middle of the, the hall, you know, it, it's sort of off-putting, I think.
To, to make it easier for them to get up, or?
So that the, that our, the department head giving the narrative can put their materials on the table in front of them and address the audience, instead of standing at the microphone with a handful of stuff, you know what I mean?
They can't use the podium?
We haven't, you know...
Oh, the, the actual podium, that's the, the election moderator.
Moderator.
Yeah.
Could they use that?
Uh, no.
Okay, that, sometimes they do.
I wonder if we can get just like a little music stand that we put at the podium.
Then the school's probably got one, too.
Because then they, can, then they can just read their notes from there. Okay, what else?
The one thing is, when they read at the mic, are they facing the board or facing the audience?
Well, that's part of the, the difficulty is that, you know, that, yes, there's a microphone, and a lo, a lot of times, you know, it's when there's people in front of you and behind you, you, a lot of times you don't know which way to face, and then people yell, I can't hear you, and you know, I just figured if they were sitting right next to us, they're facing the audience, their voice is projecting to the audience.
Moderator makes a big deal if they have to address the moderator, not the audience.
Well, we do have a new moderator this year, and this will be our first deliberation, so it might not be run the exact same as it was before.
Well, I, I also say that, that the department head is presenting their case to the voters. And so therefore, they should be able to look at the voters. Now, when they, when somebody wants to talk or ask a question, then yes, it goes to the, through the moderator. They should be talking to the moderator first.
Now, I would assume, I'm at the head table with you folks. I could stand up and move and let the department head speak from my position.
No.
There's enough rule, there's always, there's always enough.
There's plenty of rules.
Okay.
I think so.
We can worry about those logistics.
Travis Weber.
Exactly. Just thinking ahead to...
No hiding spots. All right, what else?
All right, what else, John? Scrutin.
Uh, just information here, um, NHMA says the deadline is not clear on the highway funds on APRA, you have to obligate it this year, uh, you have to obligate it by the end of next year, and spend it by the end of twenty twenty-six, so you've got a little time on APRA, the highway money, you've also got some time on. Uh, the fire chief, uh, he's reported all but one vacancy filled, but they're on twenty-four-hour shifts now. A random model on that a hundred thousand a year, and it shows why you need to put that much aside.
Do we have that?
Yes, it's on the big, uh, eleven-by-seventeen sheet, I see it right here on top on Tony.
Excellent.
You see paper, small print?
Yeah, sorry for the small print, but to run out to nineteen, to run out to twenty thirty-five. You're actually, it, it no longer, it, it, it doesn't provide enough funds when you get to twenty thirty-seven, but it does work in between.
Looks like fifteen years from now.
This is what, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, one, are we talking about this, or are we just inform, information?
Talk about it if you want.
No, I won't talk about one thing else, I noticed here. On the paper you gave us with our thing, this is four point three.
Uh, it's an error.
Oh, we can't have that four point three error come tomorrow night.
I, I fully agree, I didn't realize it did.
I wanted to make sure I got that in before we, uh, anybody says anything else that that-
Uh, you're the one dealing with it.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I don't show it on my sheet.
Well, I'm showing it on mine.
Oh, what does yours say?
Oh, mine says four point-
Mine just says tax gap four eight four two eight six six.
This one in our folder says four point three.
Oh.
This is the one going to the budget committee.
Okay, well, that's not what we got tonight.
That's the one that I'm bringing up, you, you just told me that this was the one.
Right here, four point, yeah.
Where is it, is it?
Right here.
We had one for this.
Back job. Four point three percent change in the operating budget total.
Um... Yeah, yeah, that's the change in the op, that is a correct number, but it's not the cap number.
Right.
The cap number involves revenue.
Right.
All right.
He's right. It's not, it's, it's property rate, it's property.
See, this, this right here
It's tax rate.
is the operating budget change is four point three, but it's not what the, the cap number matches here to here. The cap number is the same.
Don't forget the revenues.
The revenues made the difference.
Just, it doesn't say that anywhere. Again, I, I like to, I like to read things as being, make, just not-
Let's put it this way, you will be sitting with us at the head table.